I would like to call the September fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen Southborough School Committee in session. And welcome. Happy Valentine's Day. What a great way to spend a Valentine's.
Yes, it is. We'd love to be here.
Right. As always, the first thing we'll start with is audience sharing. Let me share.
Hi, I'm Tim Wilk if you don't remember me. I just wanted to take a second to thank Superintendent Johnson and Paul Desmond for all the effort they put into the selection committee for the musical technology item that'll be coming up later. I think they did a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of organizing the process. I was there at the public sessions and I was impressed with the work and I just thought you ought to get that feedback.
Okay.
Yes, it's right here. Nope.
All right. Then we will start our agenda with new business and first on our agenda is the NAREE School Improvement Plan.
All right, well excited. So this is our NAREE School Improvement Plan for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty. So as a staff and a school council, over the past four months, we worked collaboratively to identify school needs and goals while staying focused on prioritizing what we wanted to accomplish over the next two years, how we wanted to invest our time and resource into our focus goals. So we began the process by reviewing the past two school improvement plans, so looking back over the past four years and the actionable processes we had embedded within those two plans. We were excited by the fact that the majority of those goals had been achieved and are now deeply rooted into what we do each day, hence the trip. And those are what binds us together and we continue to celebrate all that blossoms and flourishes at NAREE. So as we move through our new plan, we will continue to learn together, we'll engage in continuous reflection, be able to identify the barriers that hinder our growth and make adjustments as needed. The priority, of course, remains, keeps us focused on student growth and achievement and meeting the needs of all learners academically, socially, emotionally, with a collective ownership of all of our students. So I have, oh, we've passed two school improvement plans and this one as well. We focus on four guiding questions. The first being, what do we want students to know and be able to do? And that's our mass curriculum frameworks and standards. How are we going to get these students there? That's our curriculum and instruction and best practices. How are we going to know when our students are there? Those are our assessments, summative and formative and our NCAS. And what do we do for those who aren't there yet or have gone beyond? And that's through response to instruction, small group instruction, our building-based support team, our professional learning communities focused on students and by customizing student goals. So in looking back over our two years and of course, the plan that we're in currently goes to the end of two thousand and eighteen, but under our goal one, school climate and culture, and I have continuous blooming out there because these are the things that are embedded into what we do each and every day. So this year, we kicked off a year-long Choose Kindness theme. So we started with a one-school-one read, the entire school read wonder, and then traveled to a school field trip, on a school field trip to see the movie, which was just wonderful to sit in the audience with all of our students and hear them gasp where they should gasp and applaud where they should applaud. It was a great experience for all of us. We share daily wonder each day during morning announcements and of course, we continue with our cot care and cards. We still have our bi-weekly Friday farewell meetings where we focus on team building, community outreach, student spotlight, cot caring themes, and on our off weeks, we have grade-level team building opportunities. For our school-wide community service projects, we have Andy's Attic, Candy for Troops. This year, we partnered with Southborough Senior Center, so we're providing them with placemats for their special events. And we also, we have volunteers who come on Fridays for our pause for reading, so they'll sit with our students and the dogs that come in as the kids read to the dogs. It's really a nice opportunity to engage the seniors in what we're doing. We also have Southborough Food Pantry and our pajama program this year where we collected pajamas for Puerto Rico, Texas, and Florida. And many of our school-wide community service projects are student-driven. They bring an idea to us and we let them run with it and they have done a terrific job with that. And then, of course, including families in the learning process through school events. We have a NAREE Literacy Night, Community Read Day, and then on March first, we have our NAREE Literacy Night. Very excited about that. And we have our off visits. We had an Osme Read-A-Thon this year. And again, our community read. And certainly not, certainly last but not least, is how we communicate to the families and we have our virtual backpack. This year, we're doing a video virtual backpack every Friday, so parents can just watch me on YouTube and hear about the updates from the week and we still communicate on Facebook and Twitter. For our curriculum instruction assessment goals, we continue to have grade-level meetings. Our professional learning communities focused on data collection and analysis. Over the past three years, we've really focused on reading and writing. And this year, we've also included math and we've been working with Kathy Lozot, our math district curriculum leader, in our PLCs. We continue to offer a plethora of professional development. This year, we had Carolina Science Blocks focused on our two new strands in each grade level. So we had PD in math, math at the school level, again, Maggie McGinty and Kathy Lozot have joined us and provided some of great PD in math. At the district level, in January, Graham Fletcher came and showed us about three tasks. And for social and emotional learning, at the building level, we have Jen Matthews, Jocelyn Wesson, Cheryl Miller, and Deb Parsons providing opportunities with an academic extension around social and emotional learning. We've also worked with Jessica Minahan and Dr. Jerry Schultz. And our academic extension happens during, when our teachers go to their professional learning community, children are engaged in academic extensions aligned to the curriculum in years of math, technology, music, social and emotional learning, keyboarding, and library. And that's rotated on a six-to-seven week cycle. So each student gets every, everyone of those that I mentioned. For our student support pool, we, again, we have our grade-level professional learning communities. That's embedded into the master schedule and they meet weekly. We've aligned our practices and documents with the three elementary schools over the past two years that we utilize in our building-based support teams. We work with curriculum leaders to continue to align standards to district curriculum. We've worked, we've really welcomed Halleen Dejardin, our new team leader, into our meetings. And our new VCBA, Jacob Dupont, has been really essential to providing support and guidance both to staff and students, as well as our new assistant spread director, Erica Edström. So great additions to our Southborough team. Continue to collect and analyze data across content areas. And for our open circle, this year, we sent Marion Solow, our open circle coordinator, to training for the updated curriculum, so she's been able to bring that back to staff meetings and into classrooms. We continue to utilize social thinking as well as responsive classroom. And for our comprehensive learning environment for 21st century learners, we have a new laboratory lot this year and I'll speak more to that. That's a ninety-minute lesson that all students engage in on a weekly basis. We continue professional development during staff meetings, in-class support, and during laboratories. We've greatly expanded our use of Google Docs, Google Classroom, Team Drives, and Chrome extensions. And just the ability to view multiple calendars and Team Drives have really helped us to be more effective in our planning and our scheduling. And then we work at a district level and a school level to continuously review what our technology needs are, especially coming up with NCAS this year. We'll be testing grades four and five on the same day, which is fantastic because we don't, typically, we do it on different days and it disrupts everyone's schedule, so we're super excited to be able to offer that this year. So moving on to our new school improvement plan for two thousand and eighteen. This first goal is going to be a shared goal, K through five, and Steve and Clayton and I worked together to craft this. And I'm sure when Mr. Principal Lavoie developed his next year, that he will consider something to, this to explore for next year. So the NAREE School will support children in acquiring the skills necessary to recognize and manage their emotions, demonstrate empathy for others, establish positive relationships, make responsible decisions, and constructively navigate challenging social situations through social curricula and best instructional practices. And this directly aligns to Vision 2020 focus area, Student Support Services Indicator One. So some of the focus areas and action processes include forming a pre-K through a teen. So that would be a team to represent a cross-section of faculty to investigate research-based curriculum approaches, strategies, that we work together to identify a unified plan across the schools. And we hope to organize that in September, or maybe through a summer proposal. Professional development, continue to offer professional development and skill-building for staff aligned to our mission statement, as well as to stay focused on the competencies defined by CASL, which is a collaborative collaboration for academic, social, and emotional learning. And that includes self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And program areas includes open circle, zones of regulation, social thinking, and responsive classroom. And we will continue to partner with organizations, our existing ones, our Southborough SOS, our Southborough Organization for Schools, Southborough Education Foundation, Southborough Senior Center, and Southborough Youth and Family. And we are also hoping to bring on board a visit from Mark and Dr. Elizabeth Englander from Bridgewater University, as well as continuous mindfulness training for both staff and students. And then provide multi-tiered supports for students to prevent social and emotional issues from intensifying or becoming chronic, so being proactive rather than reactive. And that includes in-class lessons during academic extension, response instruction, and social skills curriculum developed by Cheryl Miller that's in our Team Drive that staff can access and that she provides training for. We continue, we'll continue to use common languages, common language and practices and giving students the tools and strategies that they can utilize. So a couple photos. So this is our Choose Kind photo at the beginning of the year. So that's our entire school, staff and students. It was quite a feat getting almost two hundred and eighty people together to create this, but it was a collaborative effort. Mr. Lang was on the roof of the school taking it, so it was that we're proud of this picture. This is a theme throughout the school, their kindness like confetti. And we, we want to be a part of each student's lives with light. We know that they bring stories with them as they enter into NAREE and continue on the journey the two years they're with us. So it's really important for us to get to know each individual student and accept them for where they're at when we enter into NAREE. So goal two is, NAREE students will demonstrate growth across all academic disciplines, including math, ELA, social studies, science, technology, and NAREE. And growth will be measured on multiple measures, in multiple measures, including informal assessments, formative and summative curriculum line common assessments, as well as NCAS performance, and this aligns to Vision 2020's focus area of Curriculum Indicator Four. And we will continue by expanding our use of student progress data, by engaging in evidence in form and decision-making, using data analysis protocols. Many of us are taking the DataWise course offered through Harvard. It's an online experience. And so we're using, we'll be using those protocols and we'll continue to expand in our grade-level work and how we approach our NCAS data analysis with the shift to 2.0. And our collaboration meetings will be essential to what we do, particularly in the areas of writing and math. And we will continue to work with those with expertise, Kathy Lozot and Maggie McGinty, as well as our reading specialists in the writing area. And in technology, we'll continue to offer rich experiences. The ninety-minute block at the laboratory has been offered to us. We've been able to do it because of a generous grant from SCF this year. So this is a ninety-minute block where students come and engage in stream activities. So that's science, technology, research, engineering, art, and math. So it's a combination of our librarian and our tech specialists, and they've come together to create incredible projects and work that students are doing, such as breakout EDU, coding, 3D printing, cross-content, project-based learning, solving a real-life problem. So it's been incredible. So if you ever want to come look at this, please, our doors are open. It's really neat. I actually have, let's give it to her, I'll pass it over. This tells a little bit more about the laboratory. And here's some pictures. These are our teachers working with, this was the Graham Fletcher, professional development engaging in the morning. And these are some of our protocols that we're utilizing. This was during a math PD with Kathy Lozot. Our noticing's and wonderings and putting a plan of action into place and next steps for us as a school. And here we are. This is Graham Fletcher. And here's some of our laboratory work. So this is, this is a Lego Stop Motion, as it's called. So that's one of the, one of the activities they engage in. We participated in an hour of code. We're also working with Bit Boxes and engineering. I think they were, this is, they were building a catapult, I believe, here. So in order to keep it growing, this is what we will need, of course, district support, administrative support, SCF and SOS support, as well as wraparound support, continuous review and reflection. And this would not have been, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish this without our NAREE School Council and our staff. So we're excited for our new school improvement plan. All right, questions?
I guess I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
What? I'd like to hear a little more about technology, you know, now that we've been one-to-one with the kids for a little while. Can you talk a little about, you know, what that's meant and how it's been incorporated in the classroom, especially with respect to differentiated learning?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So so we are one-to-one and it's iPads, Chromebooks, laptops. And the reason we were able to move towards this experience, a laboratory experience, was because over the course of the past four years, our technology specialist, Amy Bruce, has gotten into the classrooms, worked with the students and staff, so it was a shared special subject. So staff was learning along with the students. And now that they are at a level of proficiency, they can take that over. And Amy's been able to expand the technology within the laboratory. So as far as differentiated instruction, we're able to create small groups. The teachers are able to create small groups, whether, maybe it's, perhaps it's math, and be able to differentiate those experiences within those small groups. Or writing, or during our RTI blocks, so that's our response to instruction blocks, we're able to utilize different programs, different apps, app smashing, but it's all designed to what, where the learner is and how we can best meet their needs and move them forward. So it's, we're so fortunate to have it. And when I first came on board four years ago, you know, I was, I didn't know a whole lot. I had never been in a school that had one-to-one. And just to watch the growth over the past four years, the students, they're, they're the natives. So they're coming forward with so much more than we are. And being immigrants, we have to learn with them. And we are in a great place right now to be able to have the teachers lead the technology learning within the classroom. Of course, Amy is still available and she does come in and support, but it's really, it's really been put in the hands of the teachers so that we could soar with this other opportunity that we're, we're building the plane while flying it with a laboratory, because the curriculum has to be built along with it, so.
So would you say it's routine now for these small groups to be in place in any given classroom?
Oh, absolutely. If you were to walk through our hallway, the moment our students walk in in the morning, they're taking out their iPad or they're taking out their Chromebook and beginning their learning, that's not to say the teacher, you know, isn't engaged with them. They're just routine and they know what to do. And so when a teacher pushes out something on Google Classroom, she can differentiate that. Everybody looks like they're working on the same project or saying, having the same work in front of them, but really, it's differentiated for each student. I had spoken about the individual goals, so particularly in the area of reading, we're able to push out certain reading selections based on the student's reading level. So three times each year, we'll assess students on their reading level and depending where they're at, we'll identify the books that are appropriate while providing choice to them. But it's, everybody's reading on their iPad or their Chromebook and it doesn't look different as opposed to everybody having a different book and seeing what each one's reading. So it's really, it's really been wonderful.
That's great to hear, because that's sort of the exact vision that we had in mind when we started on this, over forty years ago, wasn't it?
It's really, and it's that way because the teachers have just embraced it and really provided great opportunities for students.
The laboratory, is that sort of, they go together as a class?
So they go two classes at a time.
Okay.
So there's about forty, thirty-eight students in each time and it's a ninety-minute block. And it's, so that builds the collaboration opportunities within it. What's also nice about that block is, so forty-five minutes of, it's the specialist time, but the additional forty-five minutes has allowed Amy and Lisa to expand the projects and really delve into research or whatever the curriculum is, whatever they're working on over those six to seven weeks. And that additional forty-five minutes embedded into that has provided opportunities for teachers to be able to go into other classrooms and observe and then have those meetings where they can debrief and talk about what they've learned. They've been able to view best practices in other classrooms that typically teachers don't get to do. There might be ten minutes here, ten minutes there, but it's provided other opportunities as well for teachers. And the students, just having that ninety-minute block has just allowed them to continue the learning without stopping after forty-five minutes. Forty-five minutes is long, but ninety minutes is just a gift.
Is it every week?
Once a week.
Once a week, come on.
And we're piloting, what, where we're seven and seven. We're piloting a fourth and fifth grade team together and it's a great.
How did you build that into the schedule, ninety-minute block?
Very carefully. It was, it took a lot of rearranging because we also want to make sure that we provide our teachers with calm planning time. So it took some, it took some work, but we were able to do it and we didn't have to let anything, anything go. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was great.
Next on our agenda of new business is start time discussion.
Well, I think start time is a new business item for our school committee here at the K-8 level in Southborough, but it's certainly a familiar conversation that we've had. We've gathered together at our combined meetings. And it's a familiar discussion that we've had within our communities. About four years ago, five years ago, we really responded to inquiries that came our way through conversations that students and parents and administrators were having to reexamine the start time, particularly at the high school level. And here in Southborough, actually, at Trotty, we had an outstanding presentation by Dr. Judith Owen, who is well-renowned and expert in the field of the impact of sleep deprivation in adolescents. And so since that original conversation, the topic, not to use, it's continued to grow and blossom. To take a springboard off a cathode presentation, but it certainly has. And we continue to explore what our options are in terms of not only just moving maybe the time that our high school students begin their day, but the impact and the effects of that change on our K-8s, our two-member communities. We do operate on a three-tiered bus structure. And while the busing should not be the first consideration, if in fact, moving the time of, the beginning of school is, and provides benefits to our students, but in the reality of our world, it has a significant impact. We tear off of the high school route. And so trying to examine multiple options that would allow us to continue to support the current time schedule that we have here in our Northborough, in Southborough, but also in our Northborough communities. So it's been a little bit of a challenge. There are some districts in Massachusetts who have been successful in, in moving the time of day. And with the regional school system, it's far more complex because we have things like regional transportation reimbursement. We have something in the order of forty-two, forty-four buses. And they drop off at ten different schools with a, quite a geographic distance. And in fact, that's why the whole notion of regional transportation was put on the table years and years ago when the Commonwealth was encouraging regionalization. They appreciated that the geographic proximity of the schools was not like a single community with three or four schools. And in fact, to travel from one end of one community to the other is a fair, fairly significant distance. So we've had a number of presentations and on our website, on the district website, under our district, there is actually a under our district, there is actually a, um, a link for school start resources. And, uh, there is a summary of the kinds of things that we've investigated and have explored, um, over the last several years, uh, in terms of modifying ti- start times and, and looking at various scheduling options. And so, um, the conversation really hasn't taken place at the K eight level in Southborough. And while, again, the focus primarily has been on adolescents, um, it will have an impact, uh, to some extent. We don't know what that would be. I'm assuming, uh, we're always going for positive impact, so potentially a positive impact on K eight. And, um, the challenge still does become, uh, how do we get all of our students to school at a time that's best for them? And, uh, we've had surveys and, um, actu- actually surveyed our high school students four years ago and, um, their, uh, response was yes, uh, that's important to us, what time we start our day, but, uh, we also are stressed, have too much homework and we love our technology. So, um, all of those things, they identified as also, uh, factors in their day-to-day lives. And so, knowing that and taking the wisdom from our own students, we, um, launched our speaker series by starting out with a presentation involved technology and, um, sleep, the effects of sleep on the circadian rhythm of our high school students. And also, um, I think we had stress that year, we had a presentation on stress, just to make sure that we provided, um, some educational information to our parent communities about all the topics. So, where we are now is to, is continuing to explore what our no-cost options are. Um, a bus is about seventy-seven thousand dollars and, um, estimates are to move the high school any significant amount of time, which significant is depending on, um, the resource we use, but it's somewhere between twenty and forty-five minutes would be considered, or an hour. Would involve almost fifteen to sixteen buses for one community or the other. And so, we continue to be innovative and explore, um, creative scheduling options at the high school that would allow the schools some flexibility, our students some flexibility, while providing equity of access to choice of time to start. Um, and I, I commend Kathleen, um, for a principal to take on any scheduling challenging, challenge is a, is a yeoman's work. And when it works so well as it, as it has at Neri, it's really something to celebrate. It, to, to your question, Paul, it, it isn't an easy feat, uh, it sounds like it was, but tremendous, tremendous out of work, of work. So, I applaud the fact that not only one initiative did you embed in the new schedule, but several, all designed for student growth achievement, uh, which is, is just tremendous. And so, we have sort of that mindset now at the high school. While we're exploring our start options, let's explore all of the things that we want to address, not just moving the hands of clock, but also providing the schools with some other options. So, I think that one of the reasons we wanted to bring this forward is just so that the community members here in Southborough had an opportunity to hear about those conversations and to maybe visit the website and, um, you know, travel through all of the resources and information that we have available there. Uh, there is no, um, immediate response to this issue. It will continue to be discussed. And, um, we have a member of our high school staff who also is a school committee member that watches it regional. And, um, she has also researched this topic as part of a doctoral program. And she will be presenting some findings at our combined meeting, March, Wednesday, March twenty-first. And so, um, the presentation will be exciting and the conversation will continue. But it's just something, so it's awareness, uh, for our community members here. I know that our school committee members are familiar with this topic because, uh, we've been a mem- a part of the combined meetings when this has been discussed. And, um, it takes time, yeah, to be innovative and to do it right.
So, actually, I, I should have, I wanted to add after, uh, Kathleen's answer to Paul's question, how she managed to work in a ninety-minute, uh, time period, I think you said, carefully. But I'm, I think I'm pretty confident it was also unskillful. I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that. We are, um, aware, back to start time, that our region with the three districts is a more, um, complex issue to try to deal with than, for example, a single district. And the issue of transportation always comes up, is certainly understandably one of the things that makes it more complex. Other than the, the transportation, which is not the trivial issue, um, is there anything else that really jumps out as a result of the multi-district region, um, in trying to deal with this issue as primarily the difficult issue of the transportation?
I think there are a lot of subsets to the conversation. And it depends, I think, what we do, uh, there are the details in whatever we decide to implement. There are discussions with our teachers, there are some implications around, you know, collective bargaining and what the day might look like. Depending on each group, um, parents, age group, parents have, uh, specific concerns. What about after-school programs and what about, um, my child getting home in the dark and late at night and what about the students leaving too early? And so, those are very personal kinds of questions and concerns that people have. But in terms of logistics, what is the most costly logistical change? It would be the transportation. What is the most significant impact, let's say from a budgetary standpoint? It would be the transportation issue.
Okay, now, I mean, those other, well, you know, the other couple issues you mentioned, for example, getting home, I mean, you know, it, just a, a single district system with different age schools is going to deal with those also. They have that, they have that same issue.
They're not on the buses.
They're not on the buses.
They just don't have the...
The distance, yeah, the distance.
The transportation.
And the schools are in greater proximity to one another than we have, actually. And so, I can think of a district that moved, um, their start time at the high school a half an hour and they were able to coordinate their run so that the other schools did not necessarily have to change a half an hour. Some of them have decided to have the middle school students run with the high school students and they've been able to make that change.
Successfully?
We don't know yet. I guess that will, will be, uh, something to follow.
Sure.
Uh, but it's a challenge. So, we're exploring, we've been involved in multiple conversations with our bus company. And we're trying a couple, um, new things this year in terms of how we're going to, um, schedule our transportation runs to see if we can capture some, some minutes, because it is down to minutes between, um, drop-off points at schools. So, we've been analyzing that more closely so that we could mitigate any, um, time that we may move the high school and its impact on the elementary schools, to see if we could, if we moved thirty minutes, can we find fifteen in between by doing some other kinds of things so that the impact on the elementary schools and the middle schools would only be fifteen minutes? So, I think, you know, I'm, I'm delighted that you noted that it's, it has to be very thoughtful, very mindful, very collaborative. Um, and with whatever we do, proper notification so that all families could, could adjust. Um, for the little ones, it's extended day, whether it's extended day in the morning or extended day in the afternoon. And so, are all these logistical and family kinds of concerns, um, are they potentially something that can be addressed? Yes. But it, it, it has to be with thought, with notification. And all of these providers would need to adjust their schedules as well. We have a very vibrant extended day program in Southborough. Um, and, you know, students are everywhere. And that's something that, um, our students enjoy and that our parents depend on. So, making sure that our providers and our communities are aware. And there was a lot of concern, you know, early on about athletics and certainly the middle schools have after-school athletic programs as well. What is the impact of that on athletics? And, um, that concern has been somewhat mitigated in the research that we've, you know, and negated in the research that we've done, um, in terms of how it really does impact, uh, not only, um, practice time, but competition. So, there are a lot of elements, but in terms of the, the actual financial impact that is the transportation is, and so many intangibles.
And so, is the way, is the way it would go is that the committee for the high school pretty much comes up with what they think might work and then we start talking about how that would impact the schools here and...
I think that, um...
Are they looking at that as well or how does that all...
I think one of the things that has been true throughout this conversation is that we are a community of learners. And so, to talk about this in isolation, to think about it as only a high school issue, um, is not how we, we collaborate and work together as a community. And while we're two communities, we're, we, as we say, one community of learners. And so, um, we've been very appreciative of the fact that any change that occurs at the high school, even if it's just an older sibling not getting home in time to watch the younger, um, members of the family, um, has to be done i- with a common thought and a co- and, and all sharing in that conversation. So, we've tried to bring this as often as possible to the combined meeting where a- our K eights are present along with, you know, the high school staff. And I think that has been our purposeful intent, uh, to not leave anyone out of the conversation because, you know, um, it's important for us to work together on this topic.
Yeah, well, I think it is a really good thing to start thinking about because it sounds like if, if the option of getting just high school buses is not on the table, we're going to just be shifting things, then necessarily, things will be changing to some degree with the elementary schools, if the high school time changes.
When we first discussed this about four years ago, um, or seems a little bit longer than that, the, um, the whole notion was that this was an opportunity to really look at what we do very differently and not just to make this about the hands of the clock, that this is an opportunity to embrace twenty-first century learning environment that's, that is flexible, that expands the day, not just because of minutes, but expands the learning opportunities for students. And, um, I'm hopeful that that sort of innovating, innovative mindset and thinking is what drives the conversation and not minutes. Um, since we began the conversation, since we begun the conversation, the, you know, acceptable amount of time that we should move seems to be moving. And so, if we get closer to ten, it should be twenty, and if it's twenty, it should be thirty. And, and then when we started the conversation, it was just high school. And then as more and more research became available to us and more conversations taking place about this topic, which is very important and it's an important conversation, uh, for us to all engage in and learn more about, um, the issue then became middle school as well, the youngest of our adolescent population. And that they in fact then would benefit from a later start. So, it's, you know, it's, it's been, um, an expanded conversation at all grade levels. There have been, I think that, I don't know the latest, um, statistic, but there are about three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, um, in the, in the Commonwealth and we are thirteen members of our collaborative. And when I, I think Nishoba moved there, it's about five to ten minutes. And, um, Shrewsbury has been exploring this for probably off and on. It's not necessarily a new topic, but it sort of comes and, it wane, it comes and goes. Um, Shrewsbury's been exploring this a couple times over the last fifteen years. Um, and it's something that all the schools are looking at, but very few have successfully been able to find the right answer. So, I'm sure this will continue.
What did you say the figure was on the buses, if you were going to add a course of buses for the high school?
So, the, we've probably had six, seven, maybe eight scenarios over the years. And every time we've, we've completed one more potential routing of our students, we realize that if we don't tear off at the high school and try to do a single run, um, with the forty-odd buses, and this isn't factoring any of our late buses as well, which we are very fortunate to enjoy having, um, it really does support our, our students' lives at learning and, uh, their activities as well. Um, we have about forty buses. I think there were about thirty, um, eighteen or nineteen in Northborough, the remaining buses allocated to Southborough. Um, we're exploring tightening up our bus, uh, stops. Right now, we, our buses stop where there's a student. Um, and so, every time the bus stops, it's about a minute plus. And with the yo- the younger ones, it's even more. Um, they forget their lunch and there's one more hug to be had and those kinds of things. So, um, you know, that's a significant amount. And so, um, I think as we, we look at the buses, we're talking about at least fifteen. That's the lowest number that we've talked about in any one community. And that would be starting another tier. We've looked at...
So, that's fifteen just for Southborough?
Mm-hmm. And we've looked at...
Maybe it was like seventy-nine thousand per bus?
Seventy, seventy-five thousand. So, we've looked at, um, you know, flipping the runs. And the problem with that is if the high school isn't the first start, we actually lose minutes because the younger the children get, the more minutes it stops. And so, the longer the routes become. And, um, and so, that's been a challenge. But we've looked at, you know, the elementary schools in the middle, a couple of elementary schools starting, you know, early, but the earliest run would still be starting at around quarter or seven, six-thirty. So, um, I, I want to commend our, our NRT. We've gone back to them many times. They're very creative. Um, this year, we're actually going to try something new. Um, we're going to give NRT all of our bus data in March and ask them to do a dry run. This year, they will be doing ninety percent of our bus transportation routing. And so, we want to see if we could, um, how that will impact the start of school if we're able to work out all the glitches and, um, to analyze whether or not through their work and through, um, doing some creative, either, um, consolidating stops or, um, unloading our students earlier and having someone there to be watchful over them because, and then they can disembark earlier, we actually pick up some minutes. And then when you have construction like we'll have in Southborough, um, we're going to have some, I'm sure, a lot of conversations with the, um, the folks who are planning the Main Street project and then the public safety because there's one road in and there's one road out. Our schools are located at both, both, uh, on both of those routes. So, um, that will be just an adventure in terms of, you know, making sure our routes are ready for our kids and so forth, so.
Has there been discussion about, this just occurred to me and I'm new to this conversation, so bear with me, but what about consolidating the, the pickups and drop-offs for Neri and Trotty? Because that, the drop-off is practically the same location, so then pick up all of those kids on the same route, or does that take too long? Do you know what I mean? Like, that may say, anyway, that's probably, this is an idea for a different conversation.
We, we are listening to all suggestions and, um, because, you know, there might be one magic, uh, routing assist, uh, combination that we, the bus company hasn't taken a look at yet. But it is, it is a challenge. There have been, again, some, Duxbury was successful several years ago, Sharon has changed, but the number of schools in their community are minimal and they are in close proximity.
You know, like, you know, at our school, we had a K through eight school, so you could stop at a bus stop and, right? Put everybody on a bus and then get them off on a bus. And K through eight for us is four schools. You know, it's four different drop-offs to pick up.
And we have Route nine and we have Route twenty.
Yes.
And we have four ninety-five. And in any given day, that can be a challenge in and of itself, without even talking about start time.
Exactly.
So, I, I think it's an important conversation, um, because it, it could potentially benefit all of our students, um, in some way. Um, I'm hopeful that when we come back to this conversation, it's about, um, innovative approaches to what we do during the course of the day. And that's really where we started this conversation four years ago, considering, you know, schedule changes and flex plots and things like that at the high school level.
All right. Uh, next on our agenda, legislative update. We all have our yellow legislative bulletins from the MAS group.
I have a thought. You know, we have a meeting, um, coming up with Carol Decker and whatever other legislator she manages to, to pull in. You know, we have a meeting coming up with Carol Dinkmore and whatever other legislators she manages to pull in, I think it's March 13th. I believe so. So that would be a good idea to sort of get in sync on issues we wanna bring up. There? I think it's the same ones we've been dealing with several years.
Yeah. Well, except the new circuit breaker, the circuit breaker.
Oh, yeah.
There's a flurry of invitations to legislative breakfasts. I actually have one from Senator Markey's office inviting all of our school committee members to a town hall nonpartisan legislative update on February 18th at 3:00 to 5:00 PM at the Memorial Building in Framingham on Concord Street. And if you haven't received your invitation from Senator Markey, I believe it might be on its way to you or you just had it delivered live from his office to you through him. And just yesterday, um, Mr. Martin, I know, and I traveled to Neshoba Tech where MARS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, is also sponsoring a legislative breakfast in March. Invitation extended to any school committee member who would like to attend that as well. I have the, um, March 12th, I think. I can send out the date.
Go somewhere every day.
And our Quarter 9 Chamber had a legislative breakfast as well. So there's a lot of breakfast to be had.
A lot of free food.
And a lot of discussions. We actually, um, were present yesterday and the Mass Budget Policy Committee was present. And they gave us basically the non-Department of Ed version of what the budget was going through and where the actual money might be found. And it's always a delightful presentation because it is not an educational presentation from the Department of Ed or the Department of Revenue. It's, you know, sort of a bipartisan, um, non, non-judgmental look at what the budgetary landscape is this year. And tonight, we're gonna look at our recommended budget. And what's interesting is we are up here in the process. And we're in the very first block and there are seven more blocks to go around. And before, we're hoping July 1, we'll have a final budget. But it's not uncommon for us to receive final numbers in August. And we're hoping that they move this along so that the budget we pass tonight will actually be supported by the Chapter 70. They say we might receive.
And the, and the circuit breaker.
Yeah, and the circuit breaker conversation, I think that was the most enlightening. It was actually the presenter from the Mass Budget Policy. And basically, he said, you know, we know there's a lot of people out there looking for more money from circuit breaker. It was reduced to 65% as opposed to the 75%. But until the extraordinary relief, available dollars are calculated. And until March 31st, when districts have an opportunity to apply for extraordinary relief, and not every district does because they don't hit the benchmark, they won't be able to make too many decisions about circuit breaker. So that moves us to April because the extraordinary relief calculations are due March 31st. And for probably the two people at the Department of Ed that will be reviewing all of those.
What does an extraordinary relief have to do with circuit breaker?
Well, it's an act, actually, it's an extraordinary event for us when we're eligible. It means that our costs, and I know Matt's listening, so I'll, he can chime in if I miss a beat here. Our special ed cost would have had to exceed 125% of the previous year's benchmark to ordinary, to actually qualify for any additional funding. So I actually had a conversation with Sandy today.
Additional to what?
Expenditures for special ed over the previous year, special ed.
No, but our special ed was 125% of what it was.
That's what it is.
So then we get more circuit breaker.
We get extraordinary relief, aid. And that aid will come probably, if we're eligible, in April. And it had to, has to be fully expended by June 30th.
But wait, extraordinary relief aside, I mean, we definitely lost money when the circuit breaker went from 75 to 65, right? So to me, it's two different discussions.
It is, except they blended it. So they basically said, you're not gonna get, we're not gonna be able to tell you if you're gonna get your 75% back, which everybody should have gotten, and they decided to cut.
Right, stop right there.
Until, but this is what they're telling us, until they get all the mon- it is two different discussions, but they've combined it into one pot of money.
Okay, well, I think we need to tell them, you should be combining these. I mean, taking money away from special needs, I mean, of all things, I don't know how you'd sleep at night doing that.
Well, 'cause you just took, really took money away from regular ed 'cause we can't cut special ed 'cause it's mandated, so.
But it's just, I mean, to me, it's an easy thing to go to the legislature and say, look what you're doing here. I mean, and, and how can you not be able to make a case for not cutting special ed? If you can't do that, you know, go home.
I think that the point that I think with the presentation yesterday, it was the first time someone basically actually said, look, I know everybody's wanting this number to go back to 75%, but here's how it really works. It really works because once we get the strip.
But that's for this year, what about next year?
You know, that's, I thought that was an honest and enlightening response because...
Doesn't mean we shouldn't be asking for it.
Yeah, that's how they're saying it works, but let's fix it. There's a pool of money, they can take it from anywhere, real.
But what the, but the problem is, right? We, we, as, as we agree, how can you not fund that, right? But because it really is an unfunded mandate in a lot of ways, they know it's gonna get funded on somebody else's back. Here we are, okay? So...
Some mandates that we have to follow.
I guess what I'm saying is that we should be vocal, you know, about what they're doing. Put it out in the daylight and see what people think. I mean, I'm mad, obviously.
Didn't show it all. Did it well.
I mean, it should be 100%. So to the idea of the kind of 75 to 65 is abhorrent to me.
And what does that have to do with next, 'cause we're not talking about next year's budget? So they're just kinda trying to see how much? Or are we trying to see if they're going to back fund the 10% that they cut this year? Has to do with the, okay. And, but what is in the budget for starting June 1 for next year?
65%.
That's still at 65%.
But we aren't.
That's the problem. You have a one-year blip and now they're talking about these extra funds. That's the one issue, and I agree with Paul, they should be two separate things. But the more important issue even, even bummed down there is, what have they got in there for next year and get that back?
65.
Right, so it's two issues.
But we are talking about next year regarding this extraordinary, extraordinary expense or, or, you know, if you're 125% over, which we hear about in April.
That happens every year.
And have to spend it by June, right?
That's this year.
Right.
This is special, right.
And I think that all of this is true. And it is even more true for those districts who are spending the receipts in the year that they receive them in. We, we bank our receipts so that, that allows us to be, to react to these kinds of last-minute, um, difficult reductions that come our way with no notice. And so there are many districts who fully expend their special ed the day they receive it. And so their budgets were built on this. And with special ed being a significant portion of everyone's operational budget, that is a significant amount of money, a substantial amount of money. And in order to meet the deficit, that requires cuts from some portion of a budget. And layoffs and reductions in force and cutting of services and supplies and technology with no notice to the districts with budgets that have already been well set and approved the year prior. And so we see that with circuit breaker, we see that with regional transportation, that our budgets, we just talked about how we benefit from that as a, to, as a K eight because of our multi-tiered structure. Those transportation budgets were part of the agreement to regionalize and have never been above 70, except for once that I know of in seven years. And so the, those are be built into the base of the bu, of the operational budget. And, you know, there's so many facets of the circuit breaker language, which is no reimbursement for transportation. In some cases, the transportation costs are as significant as the placement. And there's no reimbursement. That doesn't factor into anything, whether it's extraordinary relief or circuit breaker. It just doesn't count. So this is something that comes up each and every year.
Well, we'll get, get all the official notices on all the breakfasts and...
And we've sent letters, everyone, right, the school committee's been very proactive with that, as have the other two school committees. And I know, Paul, there are some bills moving forward already. It's, it's disheartening to sit and, and hear that, you know, all of this funding is coming our way. And in reality, the amount of Chapter 70 increase that we've received is maybe $30,000. And the amount of per pupil expenditure is, wasn't significant. And so to say we've spent more money on public education is sort of yes, that's true because it's never cost so much money. So it's easy to say we've spent more money. I mean, that's just a common sense approach to that, but it sells well.
That might cover transportation for one child, maybe, you know.
I'm not sure. It's half a bus, it might be a van. I don't think it's gonna be a full bus.
Yeah, because I mean, a bus is...
So we're on to old business. And we are going to have an update from Kathleen on our K through eight world language study group, which has met.
We have, we met in the end of January. And we broke up into, so we now have three subcommittees. One that's exploring types of programs, K through five. One that's, that is exploring trends and benefits in world language education. And one that's exploring how we're changing the scope of K to five benefit middle entry school. So our next steps, RotoWeb is exploring visits to other districts that offer various types of programming. And each of the subcommittees is working on their, um, research, special, special area. And we have a teen drive, so people are putting their research and findings into each of their folders. And our next meeting will be March 21st. So we're off to a really good start. There's 10 of us. And, and we're all excited to be part of this committee.
I just wrote out there, I was there, it was, it was a really great meeting, lots of positive contributions. I mean, it went really well, I thought it was.
Good girl, good, good mix of people.
Yeah, yeah, great mix, yeah, it was really good.
Thank you.
All look forward to hearing more. And that was actually a question posed to us at our financial advisory meeting from the Southborough Financial Team. What will we be doing about world language? And so we had an opportunity to say, well, there's 10 wonderful folks who are going to provide us that answer sometime down the road. So very excited to hear that.
You see, look, I thought there was enthusiasm. It was nice to see the enthusiasm from people outside of just our committee saying, oh, we're glad you're exploring that. So it was pleasant, it was pleasant. All right, next is kindergarten transition update.
Equally exciting is our progress on transitioning to a tuition-free, full-day kindergarten model. This is, will be our second year. It seems like it should be our fifth or sixth, but I think we've been talking about it for two or three, which again speaks to good planning and a lot of input along the way. And with this budget that you'll see this evening, the recommended budget, the proposal is to continue to transition to operational budget. If approved, we will be 83%, excuse me, of the total cost of our kindergarten program on operational budget in the second year with the hopes that depending on what the budget landscape is like as we begin to discuss FY '20 in September, that we'll be able to move to a full, complete, um, tuition-free, full-day program. To be able to have made such progress in, in the two years and to be able to sort of stay on track with our goals and our vision is, um, pretty exciting.
All right, next on our list of old business is the municipal technology committee update. And I know, yes, and Paul, they've been actively involved in it. Mr. Desmond was the chair.
I was.
Sure.
We have the two candidates here today, Peter Albert and William Warren. The two that the selection subcommittee, I guess we could call, recommended be appointed by the school thing. So we're hoping to do that tonight. I think we have some background on each of them, they're here if you wanna ask any questions. But I can give you just a little spiel, but Peter was the only candidate I think we had that had any school experience. He's, he's got experiences both as a teacher and he's currently a technical coordinator at the Rotten School, I believe. The other gentleman is William Warren and he had some deep technical and project management experience, which I thought was exactly the kind of profile that we wanted on the MTC. He's got experience with Accenture, building systems, looking at new technologies, assessing priorities, building consensus around, you know, technology with different stakeholders. And I wrote in my notes after his interview, this guy would be perfect.
Two perfect candidates. So we are appointing two members, one who is going to serve a one-year position and a second who is going to, um, serve a three-year position.
So technically, it's Peter for the one and William for the three.
But because, since it's starting, we're just trying to get some kind of role.
Really not even one because of, our travel suggested that we ended. They, they, all these appointments usually end January 30th because their physical starts. So we'll be back again June 30th, sorry. So I guess in June we'll...
Great point.
Gotcha.
I just have to comment on the process. We spent a lot of time discussing that here at the school committee level. And I think thanks to a lot of input from a lot of folks, I, I thought the process was outstanding. It was actually uplifting and informative and a wonderful opportunity to be part of this community initiative, being seated at the table with the Board of Selectmen, the representative from the Board of Selectmen, the library trustee and, um, two, I guess we were ad hoc at the time, Brian Valentine from the town and Ryan Donovan from the library, Terry Donovan from Library Trust, Board of Library Trustees and, and myself. And we spent two days, one morning and one evening interviewing the applicants and just excited about the kind of knowledge that will be helping to form this new committee. And I think that the energy that the folks who will be appointed bring, will bring is, uh, really brings to life the intent of the committee. So it was, it was an enjoyable, we sat under a lot of interview teams in this one, it was exciting. It was a great group of folks.
I mean, all the candidates brought something to the table.
Absolutely.
And I would encourage the MTC to reach out to them, you know, as you're doing your work because, and that's what we told everybody was that no matter if you select her or not, you know, there's, there'll be a role for you.
Well, it's been, it's been, I think, acknowledged before, um, since, since Tim is here and kind of acknowledged the quality effort that was being all contributed to the process. I'd like to say again that, um, we really wouldn't be here without the incredible energy and effort that Tim, uh, really gave to this project from the time it was a gleam in, in the old MTC committee's eye to manage to get it to the finish line. Certainly, a lot of other people contributed greatly to getting it done, but without Tim, I don't think it would have ever happened. So, uh, kinda right back at you, all right, I'm asked. I have a question. Should this be two votes because we have a one-year and a three-year and handle these votes separately? Is that the way the chair would like to handle this?
Probably, and also we should, it might be three votes because we also could do an ex officio.
Correct, you're correct. I was just asking about the actual...
Yeah, so probably we should just do, I would say, do motions for each, each of them and then...
Motion before the discussion. Motion before the discussion. Also, why don't I move that, I guess move that we appoint Peter Albert to the one-year term or to the municipal technology committee for the one-year term? I guess that's separate motions.
Any discussions? All right, I'll move up, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously.
Also like to move that we appoint William Warren to the three-year, to the municipal technology committee for the three-year term.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, all in favor. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Congratulations to guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to great things from this committee's appointees.
Should we also do our, do we have to?
Well, I reached out to the town and I think the board of selectmen are gonna go, are gonna revisit the ex officio. They made the appointment the other night and forgot about this piece, so we're gonna try to get it all done tonight. And then the committee can move on. So the bylaws do suggest that the school committee may appoint an ex officio to the MTC. And it does not need to necessarily be a resident. And so Greg and I chatted for some length about who might be the most appropriate member of our district team. And reached out to this person today. And actually, his response was, you know, I've been watching this, I was hoping I had an opportunity to participate in this. And that would be Andy Mariotti, who is our district technology administrator. And particularly after participating in the interview process and listening to the kinds of questions and the wealth and breadth of knowledge of the applicants, particularly the two who are with us this evening, in terms of the kinds of conversations that they would be having about security and strategic planning and infrastructure and networking and telecommunications and fiber optics. And really, that would be Andrew. I think we, you've had an opportunity to meet him, he wasn't available to come this evening, he sends his regrets. But Andy revisited, presented at the combined meeting in the beginning of the year and gave us a nice overview of what was going on in the district. So he has graciously agreed, if it is the will of the committee, to step into this position. And I think he will be, we feel he'll be a tremendous addition to the committee. And would then encourage him to visit us often to give us some updates.
What is the term of this appointment?
The ex officio, I think, has no term.
I think we can probably reappoint, we can take it away and change it.
We would revisit it.
We can revisit it anytime.
As probably he could as well.
As any appointee can as well. Don't mention that to the two appointees tonight, just yet.
If there's anything going on at a particular meeting that someone else is more appropriate to be at, that's fun too.
And I think part of the conversation, Paul, if I can remember correctly, when we looked at the language was that they would be ad hoc opportunities too for members, for people who have particular knowledge on that topic, right? To be able to also participate.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to go through any kind of a process.
So could we make a motion for that and I can, we'd be thrilled.
I'll move that the school committee vote to appoint Andrew Mariotti, district network administrator, to represent the district on the MTC.
As an ex officio.
As an ex officio member.
All right, any discussions? No, all in favor. And that motion passes unanimously. Fantastic, so we are all set for municipal technology. Successful launch, all right, it's good to be, it's great. And it was, but certainly not least on our old business, is an update on the public safety building. We have drawings and pictures.
We do, and we're actually gonna go live on the big screen.
Good.
We can figure out how to make this live. And so I'll just bring us up to current time, practice with the conversations we've been having. Even try to shake the computer. And that's Brady, that's my golden retriever. It's not really what the high point is, but there he is anyways, taking a much deserved nap. So let's see if we can actually get the Woodward School up there. Thank you, Greg, for sharing that moment with me. There you go, not quite Brady, but as equally important. So we actually had a wonderful opportunity to meet with a design consultant. It's the same design consultant that's working on the project with the town. And we had asked him to bring some preliminary drawings in, and there's no commitment on any of this. We did suggest to him that we wanted our school committee to take a look at this and have some discussion about it. So everything is up for conversation to some extent. And so far, we've had, we've incurred minimal costs on this, the work. And so that's exciting because we have been committed, and we did commit, to see the design process through to successful drawings. We were joined at that meeting by Gregory Russell, who's the project manager, but he also is a member of the design consultant team, and Karen Galligan. So Steve, I think it was right before our MTC interviews, selection committee interviews, we were across the hall. So one of the things that we did learn, and Steve's gonna, I don't know if you want to pointer, Steve instead? You wanna take center stage and describe your school and the proposal? I do have the basketball court, I'm not sure how that's gonna show. This became very, very important when we had our meeting. So you'll have to picture this as we're talking about where the basketball court would be, perhaps due to change. And so one of the things that we did learn, and we were really happy about this, is that in the construction plans for the new entry point into the public safety building, which is our circular drive, the town is planning to put the road in and purchase the gate. So we were very happy to hear that because we thought that might be part of the redesign work that they were going to be doing. So the circle stays, but after much conversation and letter writing with the planning board, they approved the traffic flow. One of the concerns was, you know, the backup at Woodward and would it back into the safety building and so forth. And so we were successful in exchanging with Jason Melonowski, who has been wonderful through this, several letters. And the planning board gave us the thumbs up to continue the conversation about this. We're looking at this in terms of two phases. First, the most important is cutting that entry point to Woodward from the new public safety facility. And then the second part is, well, now that we're doing this work, let's see if we can improve the overall design and layout of the parking and bus routing at the Woodward School. So Steve, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
So with the entryway coming from Cordova up this way, you can't really see it on this depiction, but it would basically come this way through the public safety building parking area. It would be the gate there that Superintendent Johnson referenced. And then buses would come this way and then queue right here, right along the curb, and then drop students off to enter into the building. So what this does really is cut down the two-way bus traffic. Currently, this dark line is what we experience, so buses come in here, go around the circle, and then park in front of the building. At this point, we also have students who are being dropped off by their parents in the lower lot, walking up and then crossing at the crosswalk here with a staff member. That's posed, that's presented some challenges because you have two-way bus traffic and they're walking past vehicles that are parked here. While we have a crosswalk and you do have a staff member, it's still a dangerous, it could be a dangerous scenario. So with the, with the cut through here, it would promote one-way bus traffic. They would drop off the students and then exit through the current driveway, the driveway that we currently have here. Another change that Superintendent Johnson referenced was just the additional parking. So here we're picking up, I believe we have seven parallel parking spots, but this would be adding nineteen spaces, so an additional twelve. They'd be pole-in spots with a retaining wall and then a curb and a sidewalk, allowing people to cross here at the crosswalk in a safer manner. Right now, we don't have any kind of crosswalk for those parallel spots. So again, on this turn, where you have buses coming in and out of the property, that can be pretty hazardous to parents, students, as well as staff members.
And one of the things about that retaining wall is part of the conversation that we've, we had with the design crew was how can we make that a safer walkway for everyone, including the teachers who are, you know, moving in and out of their cars? And not only that, but from the lower lots as well. And if we can remember about a year ago, Karen Galligan, the department, DBW superintendent, spent a little time presenting the Main Street project to us. And at that time, she talked a little bit about a sidewalk that would connect down from the center of town. And so what Steve has just referenced really is connecting into that sidewalk so that it's a very safe passageway for students. And it would connect onto that, that sort of low retaining wall where we now create more parking, but a safe walkway so that the students also then have a safer pathway crossing the campus in the, in the current driveway area now, right? I think.
Yes.
Right, so right there, and we lose a lot of the clustering and I think open up the visibility.
Yeah, just this year, we actually had an accident where a bus was pulling into the property. A car was parked illegally in a designated area. Their tail end was out a little too far and the bus was leaving, the bus was coming in, and it was just, just bad timing. And it could have happened to anyone. So this, again, would reduce that two-way traffic for buses, which is a huge visibility issue.
It also gives us some parking options up above.
Yes, we pick up fifty-two spaces altogether on the property. We pick up thirteen right here in the circle because this would no longer be used for turnaround traffic or bus traffic. Buses would come this way on the circle. So this area here would be additional parking spaces for building staff and administrative staff. We keep the parking spaces all along here, but we could reduce some to create more visibility for students crossing. And then we pick up nineteen spots here, as well as, I believe it's twenty-seven spots in the lower parking area.
And none of that, none of that disrupts the current loading dock, outdoor classroom space?
Nope, it actually, it would actually help the flow for parent drop-off in the morning as well. We're talking about some curb here. So that would create a more designated, a more defined loop area where parents can come in, drop their students off, and continue on aisle.
Do you want to bring the, I'm not sure how I can bring the basketball court off.
If you just jump and hold it up.
I can just hold it up and just imagine this superimposed on that diagram.
Yeah, so one of the options that we're looking at, currently the basketball court is right here, I'm just trying to outline it. We would shift it down to the bottom corner, so it'd be out of the way. It could be used during the school day when we have outdoor recess or the students are in the front of the building using the field. So it would give them a safer access to that, where we could easily have staff members standing on the outside or mark it off with cones.
And all of this with some retaining wall material and paint? I think that's basically what, we started to investigate what the cost options might be. And I think that was.
But parents are still.
Parents are still using the lower lot. I think one of the, the major issues that we wanted to improve was just the two-way bus traffic and creating a safer route for students who are getting, getting off of the buses, or walking across the driveway there. Really, one of the issues is it takes a much longer time for, to offload the school buses than it does for a parent to drop off one or two students. So we were worried that if this is buses and parents in their vehicles, this could create more of a backup.
And would pickup happen the same way? Because pickup is now the parents park in the lower lot and walk up and get the kids. And I've noticed the buses then too.
Yeah, parking in the lower lot with the one-way traffic and using the crosswalk there.
So it's, because I, I was hoping, I thought that we might be able to loop everybody because, I mean, what's horrendous when you're trying to come through town is, is the parents coming in and out of that one driveway so close to the light at eighty-five. So is there any way, is there, I mean, anyway.
We were waiting results from a traffic study, but I, I don't think we've seen those yet to determine that would help the flow of parent traffic.
And one of the concerns from the public safety planning commissioner was what is the traffic going to be going through the public safety blocks? And so one of the big concerns they had was minimizing and trying to contain what that traffic would look like. And we actually had conversations about who's gonna lock the gate and who's gonna open the gate and, you know, those kinds of things. So the ability just for the buses to enter that was something that they were concerned about because it's actually gonna be cutting through, you know, one of their locks. And we think that it's not going to exceed what they need to do because of the timing, the time our buses arrive and the time our buses depart. But, you know, the notion of us traveling over one another's space is something that I think both people, both groups felt a little uncomfortable about. So this right now is where the discussions have gone or have come to. And we've asked them to hold off going any further in terms of class estimates or the next revision of what we had just shared with you this evening, to regain some additional input. And the timetable is ours actually right now in terms of where we go with the design work and, and an additional input from the committee.
So why still keep the circle there?
I mean, why not, or to green space?
Yeah, or just have a straight through, I mean, if the idea.
So with it paved in its current state, we could pick up additional parking spaces. So that was one reason that we felt like we could still use the space.
Also, the loading dock is that end or the?
Yeah, the loading dock is right there, in this kind of behind the cafeteria area, so it feeds out into the circle.
Gotcha, so you still need off-hours, you need a truck to be able to come in, unload, and then, so they're gonna, wow. Just, just wondering.
So if, if we want some wait time to review this more and take some additional comments, we can certainly allow for that. Or if we feel that we're ready to have them at least go back and do the next revision and then bring that back to the committee, we can, we can move in that direction as well.
Yeah, I think you guys know what, I kind of feel like you guys know what's best for the flow here. Like I said, I was hoping we could get those, do, because to me, the congestion at that spot is, is if you're there, a drop-off or pickup. It's people trying to make rights and lefts out of that driveway at such a precarious spot that.
But at least you gotta be cutting the bus traffic.
There was discussion about having, having people enter through the current driveway and traveling through from the building and then exiting through that public facility. But then you'd have students exiting the bus, having to walk in front of the bus, which we're trying to reduce.
Right, right.
Yeah, pushing the traffic down farther on eighty-five was something that was part of the initial discussions.
Right, trying to get it away, because the whole idea is to get it away from that light. But maybe once, I mean, the secondary project of Main Street is, I think, supposed to add a turn lane there. Could help, should help, after a little bit though.
It doesn't seem to be a reason to hold up, having to go forward with the next revision.
Yeah, I don't think there is a solution to that problem of the parents still having to go in and out of that.
And I'm not sure.
Rightly placed drive.
Yeah, you know, and despite the turnaround there, it does, it does go very smoothly. We've had very few issues in the lower lot where parents come in, drop, you know, it's an active drop-off and then exit the facility using the current driveway.
Okay, no, I'm talking about me, I'm talking about everyone else who's on eighty-five and the parents are cutting you off and, you know, you're trying to go straight and they're, they shove out in front of two lanes of traffic. It's kind of nuts, so, but I think that's just part of where the driveway is if we can't fix it, so.
Great, we'll provide updates as we have them. And we'll, we'll reach out to the design firm this weekend, see if we need another meeting or if they can just take that and put it to paper floors. All right, next on our agenda, we have enrollments. This is the monthly update of our enrollments. And our projected enrollments have not significantly changed from our discussion last month. and our projected enrollments have not significantly changed from our discussion last month. On the flip side, we'll see all of the changes over time. And this year, at this point, three changes, and now it's pretty stable enrollment.
And kindergarten, who knows more about this to a bunch of time, not September.
Well, you know, Clayton's up to a hundred and sixty, I know Jim used to say a hundred and forty, so we have to, a hundred and sixty in kindergarten, right? Clayton's up to-
Half no ten.
Okay. Right now, we're holding steady at ninety-nine, so.
All right, I think you'll have a few more shown up on your doorstep between now and then.
Sounds good. And this, obviously, is a big part of our budget conversation as we prepare for our budget as well, because enrollment is an important part of our conversation in making sure that we adhere or at least fall in line with our class size policies. And we, we certainly have done that this year with our budget. And we also have the general fund expenditure report.
Oh, right.
And we are keeping a very watchful eye over our fund balances. We, we have seen a shift in tuition out of district, which can be found on page nine. And so we did have a, an increase in our out-of-district costs, which is reflected in that tuition out spend line. But as we note from our current budget balance, we were so far able to absorb that into our, our budget.
That was just unexpected, Steve.
I think that was a, yes, you're re-shaking your head.
Unexpected out placements.
So this page nine, right?
Right.
What, which line?
Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and fifteen, third line from the bottom. And I, I will remind us again, and we'll go through that when we talk about the budget, that what our operational budget is actually, and Mary Beth points this out each time, is net circuit breaker. So this does not actually reflect our out-of-district cost, total out-of-district cost, because what is not identified in this budget are expenditures that are charged against circuit breaker. And, you know, again, to Paul's point, circuit breaker is an essential part of our funding model, much-needed reimbursement revenue that offsets our costs for special education. And a ten percent swing, I think we calculated in the letter to South Grove, that ten percent is about seventy thousand dollars. I think that was the amount that we had in our letter. And the budget priorities, there they are. There they are, and we're gonna take a look at them again in a very brief run-through of our budget presentation. I do want to mention on the budget calendar that we did have an outstanding meeting with our South Grove Advisory Board on January thirty-first. We were actually a month earlier than, in a year before, and, you know, it's remarkable to suggest that three and a half hours in front of a financial board was actually an enjoyable evening, but I think it-
Well, no, we can't, don't push it.
It was, it was. They were very excited about the work that we, we do in our schools each and every day, thanks to the principals and our teachers and our administrative team, and very much engaged in the conversation about what we do, and very supportive of that. And this budget reflects our continued collaboration, working with the school committee and our, our financial boards in town. And I think basically we received their full support, which was a, a great way to end a three and a half hour conversation about money and funding issues. So what, what is presented this evening is very similar to our preliminary budget discussion, we actually?
Does that mean that we have to vote to accept?
Yes. I'm on a roll, Paul.
I must say that budget, thank you.
Will we vote to accept the South Grove Public School District Fiscal Twenty-Eighteen Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of January thirty-first, twenty eighteen, until August?
Second, second. Any discussions on the paper? Motion casted unanimously, thank you, Paul.
All right, so, and we have budget calendar, and, um, budget calendar, the next budget meeting is actually town meeting. Well, no, public hearing.
Public hearing. Public hearing next month, on a budget, for next month's school committee meeting.
That's right, in town meeting.
Which is a little, which is early.
Earlier, back to its original date. And so we're happy about that. So I'm pleased to suggest that the budget, that the recommended budget that I have for you this, to present to you this evening, really does encapsulate a level service budget, but really a budget that also represents growth in our budget priority areas. We've often discussed how important those priorities are as we travel through the budget season, which begins almost the first day of the new school year. And tonight, it was particularly validating to hear so many of the great innovative practices that Kathleen has underway in her building, and how each and every one of those can really be brought right back to our budget priorities. We continue to fund our technology initiative. It's because we've had a consistent funding process in place over these last four years. There've been years that it's, it's dipped, and there are years that it's been level serviced, and we find that we are well-prepared for M-PAS two point oh, and we continue to make strides in new and exciting ways using technology in the classroom, and not just computers, but also the important technology pieces that support us, our science program as well. And that's, that's, that's pre-K beat. So that's well-represented in the budget. Our capital investment in the buildings and building systems is always something that we're very mindful of, and we're very fortunate that in addition to the operational budget line items that support maintenance and building repair, we also have the benefit of hosting folks in our schools, and that revenue does provide additional support in terms of facilities rental. And we are strategic in our deployment of those funds. And those funds then have allowed us to do significant upgrades in our buildings. Most recently, our security upgrades in all of our schools, where we've gone to a key disentry. As we've mentioned, we have targeted these funds going forward for upgrades to our phone system. We have had many conversations about that, and that is well underway and has been over the last year. And then we are also looking at that in terms of supporting whatever design changes we hope to make at the Woodward, through the Woodward enhancements. So very strategic deployment of our rental revenue. Certainly, alive and well is the integration of the laboratory and the problem-solving and the creative thinking that takes place, which really underscores the notion of what Twenty-First Century skills are all about. And the opportunity for kids to come together and collaborate and solve problems together is so exciting. And we have, again, in this budget, made some progress, graduation free kindergarten model, as we discussed earlier. We have not reduced, this is a level surgi, service budget, and so we have targeted once in our professional development opportunities to support the growth in staffing and programs that we've realized through our focus on social-emotional learning. Again, this evening, throughout the presentation, it's delightful to have a, a school improvement plan, because it brings this all alive. It makes the lot, the numbers that we work so hard to maintain really speak to the, how that translates into improvements and practices in the classroom. And Kathleen mentioned a number of the presenters that we had in for professional development, working side by side with our teachers to help realize, naturalize some of our, our goals at the building level. And then always to maintain our class size and seek the most highly qualified candidates for our school district. We are a place where people want to come, and people stay. So our budget process is, again, begins early on, on the screen. For the audience, and we do have an audience this evening, so that's wonderful, is our statement of vision and mission, which also drives and guides our work. There are our budget priorities, again, just quickly reviewed, and the budget process. Here are some budget assumptions. We began with a level service budget assumption this year. We had very minimal staff shifts. We always are sad to see folks who have been with us for many years leave and retire and continue their retirement careers. But when that happens, it also provides us with an opportunity to capture some savings in the operational budget. This year, I think we had zero retirements. And so that made this year a little bit more challenging in terms of supporting budget numbers and moving forward. We mentioned our technology goals, they're well in place, and they have been realized. At Travia, we have that exciting learning, learning management system launch that we'll be hearing a lot about next year, I'm sure, if not this year. We just mentioned that we're looking at upgrading our essential communication systems, which is our phone system. We pride ourselves in frequent and meaningful communication with our community, and it's also a safety concern for us, being able to reach out to our families, and it is essential tool of our work. We do hope, and we are making some assumptions, that our grant revenues remain at least flat, which basically means we have less money than we did, because the costs have not remained flat. So we're hoping at least in, in actualized dollars through the grants that we have this money. We do not know what our grants are and what available funding is, is out there until August, September. So while we do have a number, number of staff who are paid on grants, it makes it very challenging when we don't know our budget numbers, our grant numbers, and/or they reduce the grants, much like they do reimbursement, circuit breaker reimbursement without notice. And we won't know that until we, they release the federal and the state entitlement grants. We're hoping they're at least flat. And then our kindergarten lot. So we had some impacts this year on the budget, increased costs and student support services. We did see an increase in our out-of-district costs. And each and every year, our out-of-district educational LEAs, learning associations, do receive an increase. Oftentimes, they're approved from the state, and that increase is passed down to us, and it can range from anywhere from four to six percent in any given year. And so we try to predict what the increase will be and factor that into our budgets. But again, that's something that comes our way with, without little notice, and it does have an effect on our budget. And then we're in year one of our three-year contract. What did we have for offsets? This is always, I write it down, so I remember how we strategically use this circuit breaker money. In FY nineteen, we are using to offset special education costs, a receipt of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars in circuit breaker funding, which comes our way based on revenues we received this year, which we were able to realize through our FY seventeen expenses. So it's a two-year roll. We're always banking the year's receipts and budgeting the prior. So this is a strategic practice, and we are fortunate that we have not had to necessarily tip into the receipts that we receive now, which otherwise would have been used for FY twenty's budget.
About six fifty-two is based on the sixty-five percent.
It's based on the sixty-five percent.
So it's really this next budget year that we're gonna feel the impact of this year's budget content statement.
Right, because we were playful and mindful of it in this budget process.
Right.
And so depending on what happens with extraordinary relief, if we are eligible, there may be some additional carryover of circuit breaker, which we would also apply to the FY two thousand nineteen budget. We won't, we won't know that until May. And again, we continue to utilize facility rental income and sell, uh, capture any reductions due to shifts in services that are required by those students who have specialized services in their plan.
Can you go back to that item just for one second? The, the, um, the reason that the facility rental income is really limited to the one-time expenditures? Remind you of that again?
Why we would use it for one-time expenses?
Limit, limit, it's only for one-time expenditures, right?
We generally use that as, as if it were a capital expenditure, which, and capital expenditures are usually one-time expenditures. And as a strategy to use that to offset day-to-day operational expenses. And so that allows us to sort of save that up for one large capital, capital expenditure.
Or lots of little capital.
Or lots of little capital expenditure. So in this year's budget, it's a level service budget, and when I look, we look at the worksheet and the total budgetary increases, this is actually how it breaks down. We had eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and nine dollars worth of increases. Sixty-two percent of that was contractual obligations based on staffing. Twenty-eight percent is special education student program shifts in costs. Eight percent is that transition to kindergarten year two. One point five percent, we've often talked about the importance of trying, whenever possible, to move staff, critical staffing positions that are on grant, onto operational budget, whenever we have an opportunity to do that, because these positions are key, and we could never absorb all of those costs in any single budget year. And then we had a slight uptick of about half a percent in regular ed busing, because this is entering the fourth year of our fifth-year contract with NRT, and there's usually a gas escalation increase in the fourth year of the multi-year contracts. We had, from all budget codes, and this is, as you, as you can see, this is a lot of budget line items, it's double-sided. And so looking at all of the budgetary offsets and that number, it encapsulates any reductions on all of the fund codes that are represented in this budget that we look at each and every month. So the two combined gives us our incremental budget increase for next year of three point one-six percent, an overall net increase on budget of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And if we want to see what that looks like, where's my piece of the pie? There, there it is, and there's the pie. The blue and the purple are the only, the pieces of that pie that we have any flexibility with. When you look at the large lime brick green, that's student, that's contractual increases. The yellow is student programs, which are mandated programs and services for our students. The kindergarten is the one discretionary piece of that pie that we, we factored into our budget, basically. The purple was our choice to move, was to move staff onto budget, small, small piece of someone's salary. And then that transportation, that little slice of five thousand dollars represented in that big pie, is actually the transportation escalator for gas. I'm gonna shoot back to the previous slide here, and this is really the summation of our kindergarten proposal. It is still a proposal, like as it was last year. We remain infinitely flexible on this topic, because we don't know what conditions could change. And so this is our proposed preliminary tuition reduction plan for this year. Last year, we were able to finalize this in July. And I think we might be able to be a little bit of ahead of the curve this year, but tuition is paid on a payment plan. And so regardless of what the tuition is, the folks who are enrolling, their stu, their youngsters in the kindergarten program will have a deposit regardless of whatever the tuition amount totally is total, was the total for the year. So you see the transition this year with the seventy thousand that was removed from non-operational and moved onto operational budget. We would have six hundred and eight thousand on our operational budget, with a hundred and thirty-one thousand remaining to shift. This is a little bit of a moving target number, and it'll change next year, because we have little shifts in staffing sometimes, we may need some additional support with instructional assistance, and so we remain in flux. This year, last year moving into this year, we actually were able to move some additional monies onto operational budget from our projection, simply because of hiring and where we were in the overall budget. So our proposed tuition for this year, from thirty-two fifty last year, down to twenty-nine fifty, will be down to two thousand dollars. We're projecting our revenue based on one hundred full-day tuition students paying full-day tuition. The remaining part of that revolving balance supports the costs that are not on operational budget right now, and allows for us to have some funding available to support the needs of spikes that were unanticipated in our enrollment. This year, we have minimal students. Clayton, I don't think that's changed, right, in our half-day model? So we're gonna move forward with our blended model again next year, which is something we've, we've done. And as we move throughout the year, I think more oftentimes than not, those, their full, full-day programs. And so with that said, I would request consideration of the committee to approve the FY two thousand nineteen recommended budget, the amount of twenty- and nineteen recommended budget, the amount of twenty million, four hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, representing a total incremental increase of three point one-six percent.
So can you repeat that whole thing, or just say some more?
Only if you want to. I can't read that whole number.
Okay. So I'll move that we approve the recommended fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget of twenty million, four hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. This will continue, this is a recommended increase of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars over the two thousand and eighteen budget, and represents an incremental increase in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, three point one-six percent.
I'll second that very detailed.
Good thing it's on tape for the minute person to waste. Are there discussions?
Good work.
Yeah.
Yeah, good work.
I think this, you know, having vetted advisory and knowing that this is, you know, a good pound by the town, I mean, it's not finalized at the town, but I think everybody agrees that, you know, it's a good level of services.
Where we started, a lot of work went into this.
And it's a lot of work by a lot of people, and I want to thank the principals and central office team. Matt's just joined us, and I think he's still reeling from the three-budget reality. You know, he's like, okay, we just sit there right now, we're going to just go through this budget process. So it's been a really exciting, challenging, stressful day, sometimes trying to get these three budgets ready. You know, Matt really just came on board in November, so-
The right colors.
That's big. Cut that down, Pat.
It was really cool, some of the principals, when I say good work. Twitter.
Yeah, I was talking to them as well, but I think they were first in compliment. And the teachers, I know you worked with the teachers to put all this stuff together and everyone at central office. Certainly Greg is a key part, piece of all of the conversations that we have around budget.
All right. Well, we should vote tomorrow before we forget. So any other discussions?
Yep.
Let's vote. All in favor of the motion? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And next month, we will have our public hearing.
Yes. By fund code only.
Yes. Sounds good. All right. Last, under the superintendent's report to committee, is our capital plan for next year.
And that's really just for distribution?
Yep. Exactly. We've discussed this in detail before, so we always know it's a little bit of a moving target, depending on timing and what gets done.
I'm hopeful that as we progress through this year and conversations continue, that we'll be able to have those final cost estimates for the Wood School enhancements, which will allow us then to know what our available funding is to afford with the phones.
Right.
So more updates.
Okay. Sounds good. So next, we have educational policy and approval of grants and donations. So this is interesting.
It's nearing night. I think this is another grant from Kathleen.
Approval of the first T national school program in the amount of six thousand dollars. I don't know who Kathleen goes to talk to.
So this is interned by, it was interned by a physical education teacher, Missy Nash, with Northborough and Southborough Elementary Schools, bringing, so the first national T program brings golfing into our PE classes, so teaching foundational skills, but it is also encompasses a program about the nine core values, so character education as well as nine healthy habits. And it's a year-long, it's a curriculum that's year-long, and they have partnered with Bose. So Bose is providing all of them resources and curriculum and training. So they will be bringing trainers up from Florida to train our teachers and go through the curriculum with them, and all the equipment that's needed is all paid for by Bose.
Our neighbor.
Yes, exactly. So it's exciting.
Yeah.
And we're thrilled to bring it on board, and Missy's just excited. She's a golf fanatic, so we're just really excited to bring this to the kids.
Yeah. That sounds great.
Why is Bose interested?
You know, I'm not sure. I was thrilled that somebody was.
Yeah, but it then also makes sense because Bose is in part a Southburner, and so we support the Southborough school. So if this is a program they're supporting, it's nice that they're supporting us, and I think that's a gift a little bit, so it's kind of cool to start with.
And not, what really drew us to this is the character education part of it. There's a lot of our friends already golf, are involved in different programs, but just to bring this to everybody and just spark an interest in a new sport perhaps.
Right.
So this organization is at St. Augustine?
Yes. So the trainers will come up from St. Augustine, and actually they're partnering with a few other local towns. Westborough is talking to them, and I think Shrewsbury, I'm not sure. So it makes it more feasible for them to be able to bring their trainers up and go to different districts. But yeah, it's from St. Augustine. It's exciting.
Great.
So is the honorary chair?
Yeah.
It's not that big of a room.
We'll take what we can get.
So do we need to make a motion and approve this?
Yes.
I think so. All right.
So I'll move that we approve the six thousand dollar grant of the first T national school program. Period?
Okay.
Should we mention Bose and?
Well, so he just found that, thank you, Bose is the official home theater system, home audio system and headphone sponsor of the PGA Tour.
Ah. Also, I want to say that one.
I was pretty sure.
Thank you. So there's the connection.
There's the connection.
Thank you.
Also, so Bose is sponsoring this.
Yes.
And I'm stumbling through the motion.
Oh, right.
So the motion is for, is to accept the six thousand dollars from?
From Bose.
From Bose.
From Bose.
For the first T national.
For the first T national school program.
Yes.
Okay. That sounds great.
Second.
Second. All right. Discussion. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Sounds great.
It was great.
All right. There is no policy development at the time. We have a personnel report somewhere in the-
Yes, and I misspoke. We have one retirement. It's Magri Lubenka, who's been part of the FIN community for some time. Clayton, haven't you?
Yeah, she's been with us for twenty-some-odd years as a teacher, started in our extended day program, and she's been part of FIN for, I remember you, she actually was at Woodward for an event and has been back at FIN, and we're sad to see her go. She's been a big staple of our community, so, Southborough resident. She's worked with a lot of kids over the years in special education, so. And she's a big loss.
Yeah. Wish her well. Retire. All right. And action on minutes. January tenth meeting.
There is a distributed copy. Packet with some edits provided.
Provided.
Okay. Paul, I think you're editing.
Page three, this is in the guide.
Okay.
I'll move that we accept the minutes from January ten, twenty-eighteen, Southborough School Committee over meeting as edited. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. I'm sure we have some bills and payrolls. All right. Yellow. Next month, the, right now, I have the FIN school improvement plan on the agenda and the public hearing on fiscal year nineteen budget. Anything else?
Not for next month, but I think we're charging in April. Paul had mentioned a visit from Julie Doyle, and so I think she's on deck for April.
And I thought we talked about like the social-emotional point, is that going to be one of these more.
The reason the audience didn't talk to her about presenting social-emotional learning program.
Any other ideas for next month? All right. And last on our agenda is if we have any audience sharing.
They stayed.
I know. So exciting.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Would anyone like to make?
Give me a jerk.
All in favor?
And we have pie cake. In the shape of a heart. So please help yourself.
Meeting is adjourned.